Good evening. The City of Riverbank Special City Council Meeting is now called to order. Today is Thursday, September 25, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Janine Tucker?
Here.
Councilmember LeAnn Jones Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cal Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
Conflict of interest. Councilmembers and staff who would have a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflicts at this time. Public business from the floor, no action can be taken pursuant to Government Code 54954.3 in reference to special meetings that the public has the opportunity to address the city council only on items appearing on the special meeting notice. Individual comments are limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Do we have any public comments? All right, item 2.1, Presentation of the City Financial Forecast.
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for taking time out of your very busy schedules to participate in this special meeting to review the city's financial forecast. This meeting was something that the mayor requested a good three months ago, and we started planning for it and really just taking the general financial forecast that Maricela provides at mid-year and during the budget process and have a specific time devoted to looking at them, to allow those numbers to be considered thoughtfully as we go into strategic planning, as well as when we go into negotiations for our bargaining units, and then even into mid-year and next year's financial budgeting. The purpose of tonight is to be focusing on the general fund. When we do the studies for the water and sewer rates, we're going to be going over the five-year forecast for those at that time, which will be a little later this year. So tonight we'll focus on the general fund. I also wanted to add something that I think I've shared with you individually, but for the benefit of the public, that when we went to the League of California Cities Conference earlier this month, one of the things that I heard reiterated over and over again was the importance of forecasting, the importance of good financial data, and that it was very important to consider that when making long-term decisions. And so I thought it was very timely that we already had this on the calendar and that we were following best practices of other cities. So, and thank the mayor for suggesting this, and thank all of you for your willingness to participate. And Maricela has worked very hard. It will definitely be the Maricela Show tonight, and so I'd like to, at this point, hand over to our Director of Finance, Maricela Garcia.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'd like to begin by thanking you for taking the time of your schedule to be here tonight and for giving me the opportunity to prepare this document for your review. It's something new that the city's done, and I look forward to it being a very useful tool for us in the future as well, as we begin to look at maybe an upswing in our economy and beginning to plan for any future recessions that might occur. I think this tool can help us to get there. And so with that, I am presenting to you the general fund financial forecast. As the city manager mentioned, both the water and sewer rate studies will have their own forecast included within the document, so I didn't want to duplicate efforts by preparing a forecast on my own when we already have consultants who are currently working on that. Just to give you an overview of the presentation tonight, we're going to look at our current financial policies, which help to guide us in terms of our operating expenditures and our revenue sources, what our historical revenues look like, our historical expenditure costs. Then we'll dig into our five-year financial forecast, look at some future opportunities and risks, as well as some final recommendations. And so to begin, I'll start off with some operating budget policies. And I do have to caveat by saying that these are our policies. Unfortunately, staffing, limited staffing, limited time and revenues might not allow us to perform all of these, but they are goals that we can work towards. The first being that the city will avoid budgetary procedures that balance the current expenditures at the expense of meeting future-year expenses, such as postponing expenditures or accruing future years' revenues or rolling over any short-term debt. Currently, we don't have any short-term debt that we roll over, and it is not very good accounting practice to accrue future years' revenues to begin with, so it is not a practice that we currently do. Provisions will be made for the adequate maintenance of capital, plant, and equipment, and for their orderly replacement within budgetary limits. Unfortunately, with the downturn in the economy, we were not able to do some very important projects, and so we are seeing the results of that. Our HVAC systems that are, need to be replaced into more energy-efficient systems, as well as some minor repairs that we're currently doing to the scout hall that need to be done before any rainy season might help to further that damage that's there. The budget will provide for adequate funding of all of our retirement systems. Currently, we do have the CalPERS retirement system. We do participate in the National Industrial Union Retirement, as well as contribution made on behalf of the employees to a deferred compensation program that we call ICMA. And that's in accordance with our current contractual commitments. And so these are items that are brought up during our meet-and-comfort process. And in addition, the city will maintain a budgetary control system to help city staff adhere to the budget. And so what we do is we provide all of the departments on a monthly basis with expenditure and revenue reports, so that they're able to track their expenses to date and be able to make any adjustments throughout the year. In addition, the city will be held accountable for ensuring that department expenditures stay within budget appropriations. All requests for city council action, which have a financial impact and/or its various funds, shall be reviewed and approved by the city manager and the director of finance before such requests can be included in the city council agenda. And all the staff has been very good at doing that as they're preparing a staff report and they're working on that financial impact portion of the report. They do consult particularly me, whether the cost is already included within the budget, whether it's a new request, what the funding source will be, and what the impact will be on reserves, if any. A request for additional positions will only be considered during the city's annual budget process, except those areas deemed to be of an emergency nature by the city manager, and that is a practice that we currently follow. At this point in time, the only new position that was added has been the Building and Planning Manager, and that was considered during the adoption of our budget. We do not tend to consider any new positions during mid-year. New positions and or reclassified positions approved as part of the budgetary process shall be reviewed to determine the appropriateness of the assigned classification and/or salary structure. And so that's something that we do prior to even proposing a new position, is we make sure that the classification is correct and that the salary range is within the range that we currently have in the city, as well as it being comparable to cities that are our size. Where possible, the city will integrate performance measurement, service level, and productivity indicators in the city's published budget document. At this point in time, this is one of those policies that we currently don't have in practice. It's something that we would like to move towards, and I know the city manager has been attempting to work towards as well, and so this can be a future objective of finance to be able to, to be able to have this included within our budget. That just serves so that the public, as well as the city council, can gauge the service levels of the city and what we're offering. The city will provide a financial impact analysis of all policy initiatives, service changes, and new programs or projects. And as I mentioned before, that's normally included within the staff reports under that fiscal impact section.
And I could just jump in a little bit. Maricela and I were talking earlier, and I think these are the two of the policies that really are a little bit of concern to me, because it's a lot about what you expect. Just coming from a conference where you're talking about performance measurement and dashboards and a lot of analytical behavior and expensive software, we're just not going to be in a position to do that. But can we evaluate it in more informal ways or in less technologically-driven ways? Yes, we can do that. But I just want to, it's really all about what the expectation is, and they talk a lot about some of the big-city things that they do. The dilemma is it takes a lot of data input, a lot of analytical ability, and a fair amount of money, and you have a lot more data to evaluate and compare in a big organization as opposed to one that is our size. So, just sort of managing expectations there. And I think the financial impact analysis, we do evaluate that, we do that as part of our normal routine, but we're not doing in-depth analysis of every item that wouldn't necessarily be a good use of time and resources. So, just want to, it's all about kind of what does that mean to you, and a lot of it has to do with the size of the organization that you're most familiar with.
The city will aggressively seek state and federal funds that are available for capital projects, and we do that as often as we can. Both Sue and Kathleen Klick, as well as Michael Rydell, continually monitor to see any federal funds that might be available for our projects. Budget amendments or transfers between funds for $5,000 or less require department head authorization, verification of available funding from the finance director, and approval from the city manager. And that's currently set by resolution, and that the city manager has the authority to authorize up to $5,000 in additional appropriations or in transfers. Anything over $5,000 must come to the city council for their review. And that takes us to our revenue policies. Obviously, the city will endeavor to maintain a diversified and stable revenue system to shelter it from short-term fluctuations in any single revenue source. That's what we strive to do. The unfortunate thing about the City of Riverbank is that our top-three revenues are very highly dependent on our economy. It's sales tax, and it's property tax, and property tax in lieu, and those are very dependent on what is occurring out there. So during the upswings in the economy, we see our revenues increase; during the downturns, we see those three revenue sources decrease. The city will estimate city annual revenues by an objective, conservative, and analytical process, and for the city manager who knows me well, I tend to err on the very conservative side. So I would rather see us come ahead at the end of the year rather than fall short and have to make up through some other funding source. The city will strive to establish user charges and fees to recover the cost of providing the services, and annually recalculate the full cost of activities supported by user fees to identify the impact of inflation and other cost increases. And this is something that the city council is currently doing now through the water and sewer rate studies, but this also applies to some of our other service charges, such as our building permits. And so it has been a very long time since we reviewed some of those fee structures, and it is something that the city should do now, prior to any economic boom coming or prior to any new housing coming in, to review those fees to ensure that we're adequately recovering our costs. And non-recurring revenues will only be used to fund non-recurring expenditures, and that is a very good policy for all cities to follow. Your non-recurring revenues are those one-time monies that come in, for example, our PTAF reimbursement or legal fee reimbursement from the quarry, and those are one-time monies that we will not see recurring in the future. And so those are the type of revenues you should be using for those one-time capital expenses that need to be done. And so that takes us to the end of our financial policies. These are the policies that we've been working off of as we build our budget, but they are not set in stone. The city council does have the purview of reviewing these on an annual basis if they like and making any suggested changes to them. Something that we can also do is that the Government Finance Officers Association also issues best practices each year in terms of reserve policies and operating budget policies that could be incorporated as new things come forward. And so if there's no questions, I'm going to take us to our general fund revenues. And our major revenue sources, our top-three major revenue sources make up about 60% to 70% of our revenues in the general fund, our sales tax, property tax, and our property tax in lieu of VLF. We do have other revenue sources that are incorporated within our general fund, and those include some of our service charges, such as police service fees, building and planning fees. We have some state subventions, although those have been very limited in these past couple of years. Grants and the transfers in of management fees to reimburse for salaries. And then we have interests and one-time revenues, as well as franchise fees.
May I just for a moment?
Yes.
On our major revenue sources, areas that do not have landscape and lighting is paid for by the general fund?
Areas that do not have landscape and lighting, currently we do pay for the landscaping portion through the general fund. The lighting, we're able to pay through our gas tax, because the lighting obviously offers lighting to our streets, and so we're able to fund that through gas tax. But the majority of landscaping that's common area landscaping does get funded through the general fund, and that's through Sue's Parks Division.
So through, I don't know, landscaping is not that great in payment, but that is also part of a revenue stream for you?
Correct. Yes.
And in the future, we may have additional fees that will help offset?
Correct.
Maricela, can you give us some examples of subventions?
Those are state revenues that might come in. Currently, we have the COPS SLE SF funds that come in, so we receive $100,000 from the state that can go towards our contract, and that's what we currently do. You're welcome. And so our sales tax. Sales and use taxes imposed on almost all retail transactions here in our county. The current sales tax rate within the county is 7.625. Obviously, that varies from city to city based on whether they have an additional sales tax that they have adopted. With the passage of Proposition 57, which is also known as the Triple Flip, in March of 2004, the state shifted a quarter of a percent of the city's sales tax to the state's general fund to pay for some recovery bonds. That shift in the sales tax is actually ending in fiscal year 2015-16. So although they have shifted that quarter of a percent towards that, they have repaid us through property taxes.
But property taxes went down.
But property taxes went down, but the interesting thing is that they calculate the specific dollar amount that the city should receive, and it's not dependent on assessed value.
Okay.
So they repay us 100% of what is owed to the city in order to make up the 1% that we are to recoup. And an interesting note is that the city's top 25 sales tax generators provide approximately 80% of the city's sales tax. And so those 25 sales tax generators are very important to the city, and we can probably guess who is very high on that list, and that does include our crossroad businesses. So our sales tax generating categories, and it shows you what percentage of the sales tax they provide to the city. We have general retail, which includes clothing, so that would include our Kohl's, our Target. And then we have 20.8%, which is construction, which would basically be Home Depot, Denner Lumber, and some of those smaller businesses. Transportation is an interesting one, because this is the sales tax on the gas. So in addition to the gas tax, we have the sales tax, and so as there's increases in gasoline prices, we also benefit from that increase in the sales tax. And so 19.8% of our sales tax does come from transportation. We have food products, which includes our grocery stores and our restaurants, which bring in 17.4%. And we have some minor business-to-business, so it's like our Staples, which sells to other local businesses for their office needs, and then we just have some minor miscellaneous sales tax that comes in. And so these are our top categories. And so here is a nice little graph of what our sales tax revenues have been since fiscal year '02-'03, and you'll notice the significant jump in sales tax revenue in fiscal years '06-'07, and that was when our crossroads started. So that jump in revenue was almost $800,000 that came in that first year from crossroads. And if you'll notice, we never really had a significant dip in our sales tax revenue, even through the recession. And our sales tax auditor always came in with very exciting news when we could, when they could tell us that there wasn't any projections that the city's revenues would decrease, partially because of the fact that we were able to draw residents from other neighboring cities to come and shop at our shopping center. And so some of the, some of the background work that they prepared was the fact that we have residents from Escalon, from Oakdale, and we even had residents as far as Sonora that were coming to shop in our city.
That's, to me, that's very significant, because that sales tax kept us from being stocked in.
That is exactly right.
And that we should look for ways to increase that revenue stream.
Yes. Our second highest revenue source is our property tax, and it's imposed on all real property, which is permanent improvements and land and any tangible personal properties. The general tax levy is 1% of the assessed value, and it can be adjusted by an annual inflator of no more than 2%. Currently, what the assessor's has done is it has gone back to reinstate the Proposition 8 reductions that were done during the economic downfall. And so some of those properties actually increased more than 2%, but that's allowable under the Proposition 8 regulations. Property in the state of California is generally assessed, reassessed only upon change of ownership, and in our city, our properties are assessed by the Sanosas County Assessor's Office. Cities and other local agencies, such as schools and the county, share in the countywide property tax pool for purchases that are made within our county, but not within the specific jurisdiction. And here is a graphical representation of our property tax over the past 10 years, and you'll notice that large upswing in '06-'07, which was when our crossroads was building out, and this was the housing subdivision portion of it. In '07-'08, we saw a slight decrease, and property taxes normally fall about one or two cycles behind that economic downturn, and so '10-'11 was when it really first hit the city. And so we've seen, although it's been a slow upswing in the revenues, it's been a steady increase since then. Our property tax in lieu of VLF, this is actually a revenue source that comes from the state of California, and it accounts for the 1.35% property tax, which is in lieu of receiving the full 2% vehicle license fees. So in the past, prior to fiscal year 2003-04, the city used to receive vehicle license fees. Then the state decided that they would divert a portion of that to their coffers and reimbursed us with property tax. And so this funding source is tracked separately from our regular property tax, because it's directly given to us by the state of California, rather than through property tax assessments. This revenue source is considered a property tax and therefore is affected by increases and decreases in our property values. And here is a graph of our revenue since 2004-05, which was the first year when we received them. You'll notice the huge increase in '07-'08, which was our peak year, and obviously when crossroads was continuing to build out. The decrease in '09-'10 was due to the economic downturn. So we currently are not quite yet at our peak revenue time. And that's just the highlight of our three major revenue sources and some of what has affected them throughout these past couple of years. I'll dive into our general fund expenditures, and I'll highlight just two of our major expenditures, which really, if you think about it in reality, our Sanosas Sheriff's Contract is also personnel-related. So well over 50% of the city's general fund is personnel, whether it's city staff or sheriff's staff. And so I wanted to highlight those, because those have the most impact on our general fund budget, as well as incur the most significant changes. Our operating costs from day-to-day, or from year-to-year, don't tend to change very much, unless there's a significant contract that's issued, but it's our personnel costs that do impact our budget the most. And so our personnel costs, as we're discussing these, those include all of our base salaries, the overtime and standby, the health, dental, and vision insurance, our Medicare costs, our PERS retirement costs, our national industrial pension costs, our state disability and unemployment costs, workers' compensation, and deferred compensation. So all of these items in total make up a person's salary and benefits. And from what we've viewed, both the city manager and I, is that the trend has been that an employee's salary is augmented by at least 50% with benefits. And so, to give you an overview of our personnel expenses over the past 10 years, there's been some significant upswings. '08-'09 was a big year for us in terms of us adding some additional staffing to try to be able to sustain the level of service for all of our new residents, particularly in crossroads. That's when we experienced some of the major upswings in our population, and so we did add some staff members to our staff. Even though at that time, the recession was just starting, we wanted to ramp up, thinking that the times were going to continue as they had been. '09-'10 is when we started to see some of that come back and kind of bite us, because we were looking at layoffs and some employee concessions in order to be able to balance our budget.
Got a question, Maricela?
Yes.
Can you give me an idea between 2003 to 2004 to current, how much the staff has grown?
It's actually, we were up to about 65 full-time employees at one point in time. Currently, we're at 46. So it has changed significantly. And I did highlight the fiscal year 11-12 figure, just because that's the first year where we made the change in how salaries were allocated within the budget, and so it reflected 100% of an employee's salary within their base department. And so if their base department was the general fund, for example, the city manager, we reflected 100% of her salary within the general fund, but then we would compensate by transferring in funds- But then we would compensate by transferring in funds from sewer and water whenever she happened to work within those areas. And so that's a practice that we still do. And what it does is it provides a little bit more of transparency to our residents in that they could look at the budget and know that that's 100 percent of a person's salary, and they didn't have to go searching for additional figures to try to calculate those.
Maricela, would that be why it looks so even between '08-'09 and 11-12?
Yes.
And then even though the number of employees have gone down, it looks like in 12-13 it went up. That's just because there's a calculation, not necessarily that there's more employees.
That's correct.
That compensation replaced some of the general fund salary, or was that additional?
Actually, it doesn't replace the general fund. It augments our revenues. And so it's a direct offset.
The reason why we did that, so we know exactly what was being paid to individuals, including benefits.
Correct.
So it's easier to track for the, more transparent.
Yeah.
Yes.
I agree.
So I believe with our last budget, when Jill works at the LRA, some of her
That's correct.
income comes out of there.
Yes.
But the full salary is reflected in the general fund, and then it just
Right.
It's transfer-like, was you saying?
Yes. Yes. And our second major expenditure within the general fund is our sheriff's contract. This contract was established in 1995, and our current contract expires next year in June of 2015. The benefit of the sheriff's contract is that we're supported by some specialty units, such as SWAT and hostage negotiations, our bomb team and dive team, if we were ever to need that. Our current sworn staff is at 18, which includes our chief of police, and we have four non-sworn staff members. There's a few vacancies there within that 18 sworn staff and the non-sworn staff, as well as the two unfunded positions, which began last fiscal year. And I do have to mention that within the projection, I have carried that forward. And so our contract expenses have remained relatively stable in that they're increasing. Some of the significant increases usually come down due to changes in workers' compensation. We were able to also see some salary savings when the county was able to negotiate any concessions from the employees, and so those were passed through to the cities as well. And so that takes us to the end of our major expenditure sources within the general fund and on to our
Before you start on that, I took a look at your advanced, your five-year forecast. And one of the analysis done each time an operation by the federal government, they take a look at five years to 10 years out, how stable a region is. And they take a look at how things are progressing. Right now, out of 132 countries tracked, 57 of them are worse off than they were in 2009. Only 23 countries are better off. So that's very significant. And this downward trend in countries being bad, you know, being worse off, is very disturbing to the State Department and to a lot of other federal entities. To falsely keep our, you know, from the downturn to be so bad, there's something called quantitative easing, the QEs. And in that QE, we've done three turns of QEs where we kept falsely our interest rates low, and we have not come up with, you know, what is the unintended consequences? One of them, they never intended, was that now we have a larger disparity between wealth and non-wealth. U.S. is projecting between now and 2018, a steady growth. After 2018, they are not. So after 2018, we should be very careful. U.S. has had a high unemployment for the last six years. You're not covering that in this report, are you?
No, I'm not.
But high unemployment for six years, that is unprecedented. And high unemployment is above, I want to say, 7 percent. And state of California is just under 9 percent now. And Central Valley won't get under 10 percent until 2016-17. So when the height of our new economic boom is coming, it's still very slow. California projects a 2 percent growth to 3 percent growth over the next couple of years. We in the valley will start seeing a little over 2 percent in 2016-17. And our unemployment will drop down below 10 percent due to a construction boom. That construction boom will be short-lived. Manufacturing, which has had a two-decade decline in California, will see a 1 percent increase because of housing and construction boom, demands for certain manufactured goods. So I know you have a five-year city forecast. We can be affected quite easily if these forecasts that the federal government has projected go awry. Now, the U.S. affected the entire world, right? Where there's housing market downward turn. There's another country that can affect the world much greater than that in the same vein, and that is China. With everybody investing into China, sending their marketing over, they built, all of a sudden, a middle class. The U.S. is now, and not only U.S., but most European countries, are retracting those companies back to their homelands or to another country that they can, but not in China. So what is that doing? That's causing them to lose their jobs, and their 7, 8, 9 percent growth of GDP is now negative. The middle class won't be able to afford their housing, and they will have exactly what we have on a much larger scale. So that could affect us, it could be a lot sooner than 2018. So when we go through the next five years budget, or what you project, there's a lot of things that may affect it. One thing that might also affect it is political uncertainty in certain areas of the world. ISIS is one of them, and that is probably one of the most dangerous threats. So analyzing outside the city of Riverbank is always important when you're analyzing inside. I know the state has given you some good projections for five years and beyond, but a lot of it is quite dependent upon what happens to the U.S. and outside the U.S. So when you go through this, there's a lot that can affect it quite easily. So we have to do something, as the city did earlier, protecting themselves by having an increase in sales tax and wherever we can get our revenue stream.
And as we discuss our opportunities and some of our threats, and then our recommendations that we're proposing, it's with that in mind in order to prepare us for that eventual economic downturn. And so my financial forecast is a lengthy document. You do have a copy of that provided, but I did break it out. Hopefully, you'll be able to view that a little bit easier. But I did want to go through some of my revenue assumptions. Sales tax, we're looking at a 2 percent increase per year, and that's from our sales tax auditor. Their best or most optimistic guess is usually 5 and above. I usually go with their most likely, which is a 2 percent. And I don't tend to deviate from that, and it has served me very well in the past in that that's been about the projection that we've received. Property tax, I included a 5 percent increase, even though I discussed the fact that it was a 2 percent allowable increase. I'm looking perhaps into the future to some housing development, particularly on the east side of Riverbank, not yet on the west side. So I was factoring some revenue source there and increased property taxes. And that seems to be currently where most of the development interest has been stirring at this point in time.
Have any figures on the state's projections for property taxes for the next four or five years?
I don't currently have those, no. Property tax in lieu, which is the other property tax source that we received, and that I included a 2 percent increase because it is based solely on assessed value. And then our transfers in, which is the management fees, those are all based on my salary projections.
Also add that, you know, we understand that these might adjust slightly, but by going conservative with the sales tax, it prevents us from getting out ahead of any recovery and not get hit as hard if we should have a downturn. Because I think that the, while, I think the mayor provided a really good overview of some of the major issues that affect the economy, and, well, we didn't go through those in detail. I think intuitively, that's what's impacting some of our decisions, the general projections. We don't want to get out too far in front of anything. And we do have an economy that goes in economic cycles, and we tend to have a recession every decade or so, give or take a year or two. And so we need to be prepared for that. And we don't, you know, the timing is difficult to predict in specificity and can be complicated by the factors that the mayor outlined. So I just concur with Maricela's conservative approach, and you can always adjust to increase in revenues. It's easy to do that. It's much more difficult to adjust to a decrease in revenues.
And so moving into our five-year financial forecasts, you'll notice our revenue steadily increasing over the next five years, particularly through the sales tax, the property tax, and the property tax in lieu of VLF. There's a few other minor revenue sources that could come into play. Our police services fees have been steadily increasing over the past number of years. And so those are based on our historical trends there. And so we have included an adjustment for that. There's some revenue sources that were one-time in nature and that we will not receive in the future, and that is our legal fees reimbursement, our PTAF reimbursement from the county. We were receiving loan proceeds from the specific plan to directly offset costs. And so those are revenue sources that we will not see in the future. And so I've made sure not to include those because they are one-time in nature and not anticipated to be received. Just to kind of delve into, oh, I thought I had more slides on that. If there's any specific questions on any of these revenue sources, anything that's under the taxes, I assumed either a 2 percent or less when it came to that, except for the property tax, including the franchise fees. And that could significantly change based on additional housing coming in as well. The expenditure assumptions that we've made in terms of staffing costs, we're looking at salaries, and mind you, these are just my, I can't even say that they're my best guess because these are all based on meet and confer and what we negotiate with our two labor parties. But I wanted to see what the impact of these would be on our budget in the future and whether they could be sustainable. So currently, in our memorandums of understandings with our two labor unions, we have bonuses that are, one-time bonuses that are built in. I decided to see what it would look like if we were to continue that trend into 15-16, and then maybe a 1 percent cost of living adjustment thereafter for 16-17 through 18-19, and what that would look like. And so those figures are included within the projections for our salaries. CalPERS, the benefit that we have, being a small city, is that we're in a risk pool. That risk pool has allowed us to take advantage of being able to spread some of the significant assumptions changes that have been made by CalPERS. And so we won't see as large an increase as if we were a standalone city. The projections we received from both the league and CalPERS are looking at less than a quarter of a percent increase on the changes in assumptions that are currently being made by CalPERS.
When we went to the League of City, I think I was at one meeting, but I think also at the conference, they were projecting a 25 percent increase over a five-year period.
The figures I received from them were not that high. The documents that I have all showed about a quarter of a percent, and what I've included is a 1 percent increase each year since then.
One of the other factors that really helps us is that we do not have a police and fire.
Safety.
I mean, we pay it through the contract with Stanislaus County, but a really big chunk of those increases are often related to public safety costs. So the setup that we have here is very fiscally effective.
Health insurance, this year, we were able, what I projected for the current fiscal year was a 5 percent increase, and what we're actually going to experience is a 1 and 1/2 percent increase. So moving into the consortium that we're currently involved in has greatly benefited the city in that it has limited those increases in health insurance. And we currently have one more year on that contract after this next calendar year, and we hope that that trend continues. But in the case that third year, they come back and increase significantly, I did include a 10 percent increase thereafter in case the city went out to seek alternative health insurance. And then workers' compensation, over the years, the trend has been about a 1 percent increase. In terms of the sheriff's contract, I'm looking at a 2 percent increase there. Obviously, any changes that they may have through their negotiations, we know that there's issues in retention and in attracting new deputies. So if there are changes within their salary ranges in order to better attract more deputies to our county, then we will see those impacts directly passed on to us. But at this point in time, I have included a 2 percent increase. And some operating cost expenditure assumptions, and the reason I wanted to highlight these is that some are very cyclical, and so they do affect our expenditures from year to year. Trainings, we've included some additional monies for trainings and no change after the 15-16 fiscal year. Election costs are cyclical in that the current fiscal year, we have $20,000 allocated towards elections. Fiscal year 15-16, we'll see a reduction in that because we will not have any open seats. But 16-17, we will most likely have district elections in place here at the city. And so I've included a projection of $50,000 in order to perform those district elections.
Before we move on, were we thinking of going to the public for district election in 15?
Actually, we do need to, unless there's a legislative solution, we will most likely need to go to the voters in 15-16 to get approval to do
District elections.
district elections. So that $20,000 may be optimistic.
Okay.
Or to be able to reduce our expenditures by $20,000 might be optimistic.
Vehicle charges, which come through from the sheriff's department, those have been fluctuating from year to year. And so we've been including increases between $5,000 and $10,000, and so that's what I've done, moving forward from 16-17. Engineering, I've added an additional $10,000 and then no change after that in the anticipation that we'll have federal grants that will cover any engineering costs for our projects. The ED Bank loan, which is our downtown beautification loan, the final fiscal year in which we will have that payment is in fiscal year 15-16. And so I do show that $126,000 reduction in fiscal year 16-17, as we will no longer have that payment moving forward. What we do have to keep in mind, though, is the Riverbank oil outstanding ED Bank loan. Although we have repaid the county, we need to repay ourselves and our system development fee funds. And so that is something that we will need to take into consideration in the upcoming And some one-time expenditure assumptions, our housing element, this current fiscal year, we funded that at a cost of $50,000. Ongoing, we won't have that cost until fiscal year 19-20 because it is every five years where we have to perform that where we have to perform that housing element update. Our website, we're looking at a proposal that will go forward to the city council, and so these are just projected costs that will be proposed for the update to our website. And as the city manager and I were discussing this, this is sort of building up our foundation as we move forward into the future. And perhaps you'd like to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Maricela. There are a couple of things that I think that we're going to need to consider when we are experiencing some potentially temporary increases in revenue, and that is shoring up our foundation. We all recognize we need a new website, and that that is a foundation for providing additional services and increasing our customer service in today's environment. It's expected. It is no longer a luxury, it's expected. Our financial software is failing. It is not able to keep up with what we need to be able to do. And one of the other things that I think we all heard at the league was you had to have good data. And right now, we're producing really basic data manually because our financial system is so dated, it can't keep up with other technology updates that we have had to do. In addition to that, we've talked about the backup generator, and we thought it would last, but I got word actually this week that it is beginning to fail and that that's something that we might need to consider sooner rather than later. So those are things that, as we get ready, anticipating we're going to have another downturn, is I want to get our, you know, we want to get our, we got our roads replaced, we want to replace our HVAC, we want to do preventative maintenance in order to make sure that we can shore up if we should have to delay things on a temporary basis.
Is this in 2018, are you expecting that?
Expecting it. You know, I think it's going to be hard to say. I think, you know, if you're looking at the world and the way things are going, there's still some financial instability in parts of Europe, and we've got the issue with, the new issue with ISIS. I think those are all things that are of great concern. I mean, if I had to, if I had to just guess, my thought would be it's going to be sometime in 2017.
That's when the slowdown will probably happen and hit hard in '18. And it may, and some projections are five-year in duration.
And I think, too, we're not going to make a, we're potentially not going to make a complete recovery from this, the great recession, the employment factors, the, some of the financial policies that are keeping us going as those, I mean, those are really important factors that will affect us.
Plus, our national debt, right now is at 67% of our GDP, where historically it has been at 37%. So how long will that be sustained? And if that is trying to reverse itself, that would have to be a policy decision. But if you take a look at what's happening now and have it go out, we can't sustain a 67% GDP towards